Meeting minutes. See, we have Zio coming in, so I think we may get there. So before we get started, I want to ground us in a statement of acknowledgement. So on behalf of the Seattle Planning Commission, we'd like to actively recognize that we're on indigenous land, the traditional and current territories of the Coast Salish people who've lived on and stewarded these lands since the beginning of time and continue to do so today. We acknowledge the role that Western-centric planning practices have played in harming, displacing, and attempting to erase native communities. And we commit to identifying racist practices and strive to center restorative land stewardship rather than unsustainable and extractive use of the land. Welcome to any members of the public that we have on the call. We are happy to make all of our meetings open. Note that we do not hold public hearings as a commission since we are an advisory body. We provide recommendations to elected officials that in turn make the actual decisions. And we encourage individuals and organizations to provide their comments appropriately to elected officials. And this meeting is a hybrid meeting with some individuals participating remotely. While others are participating, we've had a change in venue and the in-person location. What room are you all participating from, Vanessa?
Thank you for catching that, Michaela. We are in City Hall on the third floor, room 370.
All right. But it appears that we have all of our commissioners on the call remotely.
That's correct.
Okay, and is there a notice down on the boards and commissions door in case for individuals who may show up in person?
There is. Olivia made a note and put it down there, so. And I've alerted our second agenda item, folks, who may be joining us in person.
Okay, great.
Michaela, we have more than four of them now.
Wonderful, okay. So we are going to next, I believe, look at our color brave space norms. We tend to have a commissioner pull one of these forward at a meeting and speak to its relevance for the conversation today. Do I have a volunteer?
I will I'll volunteer. I wanted to just highlight creating a space for multiple truths. It feels like some of the things that were, there's lots of different perspectives on housing, depending on where you come from within the, you know, depending on your housing situation and you know, whether you're a renter, whether you're an owner, whether you're a new resident, whether you're new neighbor, lived there your whole life, and just want to make sure that we're thinking about how our neighborhoods work for everyone.
Thank you, Matt. So I suggest that we agree to using these norms to guide our conversation today. Next up on the agenda, I will review what we're talking about today. We have two briefings. One is from the Office of Planning and Community Development on the proposed legislation to comply with House Bill 1110, which was a middle housing bill. And we will also get a briefing on the LID I-5 project. We do have now a need to approve our meeting minutes from the March 27, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. May I get a motion and a second to approve? Rose moves. Thanks, Rose.
Matt seconds.
Matt Malloy?
Malloy.
Thank you. All right, all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? And with that, the meeting minutes for March 27 are approved. So for our upcoming commission meetings, we have a Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting on Thursday, April 17, from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m., and that meeting will be held online only using the MS Teams platform. And our next full commission meeting is Thursday, April 24 from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. And that will be a hybrid meeting with some individuals participating remotely while others are in the boards and commission room at Seattle City Hall. And then I'm going to move on to announcements and commission business. Vanessa, take it away.
Thanks, Michaela. So as Michaela noted, this is a hybrid meeting. We actually have all commissioners joining us online while staff to the commissioner here in room 370 of Seattle City Hall. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for questions and comments from commissioners. And we are going to be using the chat function for commissioners to join the discussion queue. Please like to remind commissioners not to put substantive comment in the chat as members of the public who are calling in cannot see the chat. Members of the public who are joining us via MS Teams can see the chat, but we never know if somebody's going to be calling in. So after we go through introductions, I will talk through how we're going to handle public comment. So back to you, Michaela.
All right, we will popcorn around. I'll get us started. Please provide your name, where you live, and what you do for a living. What was your preferred pronouns? And I can model that. So Michaela Duffer, and she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill and I work in affordable housing policy and planning. And I co-chair the commission with Jamie Struble, but I do not see her on the call, so I will pass it over to Rose.
Hey, I'm Rose Lucella. What's in pronouns, they/them? I am up north in the Leighton Springs neighborhood and for my day job, I'm a wetland biologist and permitting specialist with Jacobs Engineering. And I will pass to Cecilia.
Hello, my name's Cecilia. She/her pronouns. I live in the Roosevelt neighborhood in North Seattle. And then for my day job, I'm a community organizer at Display Rights Washington and work with non-drivers, people with disabilities on transportation and housing. And my computer's in a loading crisis, so I can't see any of the participants, so if someone can elect themselves.
Andy, do you want to go next?
Sure. Andy Denenberg, he/him, live in Northeast Seattle, and I teach at the University of Washington in both public health and urban planning. And I'll go to Dylan Stevenson.
My name is Dylan Stevenson. He/they pronouns. I live in the and I also teach in the Urban Design and Planning Department at the University of Washington. And I will pass it along to Matt Malloy.
Everyone, Matt Malloy. He/him pronouns. I live in the Green Lake neighborhood. And I work at a restaurant as well as substitute teach. And I'll pass to Matt H.
My name is Matt Hutchins. You see him pronouns. I am an architect. I live in West Seattle and I, let's see, am I, oh, and I think I see Caleb.
Hi, my name is Caleb Tolday. He/him pronouns. I live on Beacon Hill. And I work in education. I'll pass it to Radica.
Hi, everyone. I'm Radica Naeve. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Wedgewood in North Seattle, and I'm an urban planner. I'll pass it onto Nick.
Hi, everyone. Nick Whipple. I use he/him pronouns. I live in West Seattle in the North Dell Ridge neighborhood, and for my day job, I'm a planner on the east side. How about Deanna?
Hello, I'm Deanna Quintanar. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill, and for my day job, I'm a multimodal transportation planner. Whoever hasn't gone can go next.
How about Jamie? Jamie was having
Sorry, I was having Teams issues. I'm Jamie. She/her pronouns. I live in the future 130th Station area, and I work in climate change and environmental justice. And I co-chair the commission with Michaela. And Vanessa, feel free to name someone.
How about, how about Zio?
Hi, sorry, connectivity problems, so I may drop out, but
Thanks, Zio. How about Dylan G?
Everybody. Dylan Glosecki. He/him pronouns. I live in the Central District. And I am an architect with Perkins Eastman, working on mostly residential mid and high-rise and urban infrastructure projects. I think I'm the last one.
You are. Onto staff, Robin.
Hi, Robin Gonnigle. I am staff to the commission. I use she/they pronouns, and I live on Vashon Island.
Olivia?
Hi, everyone. Olivia Baker. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm back to the commission. John?
Hi, everyone. I'm John Hoy. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm staff to the Planning Commission.
I'll wrap this up. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for joining. My name is Vanessa Murdock. I use she/her pronouns. And I'm the executive director of the Seattle Planning Commission. I'm going to just briefly go over the ways that people can provide public comment, which we welcome at our full commission meetings. People can either email me about eight hours in advance, and I will read the public comment into the record. I haven't received any emails. There's also the option to offer comment using the platform, the MS Teams platform. So you can either raise your hand. If you happen to be dialing in by phone to the meeting, please email me at vanessa.murdoch. I'll spell that out. V is in Victor, A, N is in Nancy, E, S is in Sam, S is Sam, A dot Murdoch, M is in Mary, U, R, D is in David, O, C, K at seattle.gov. And let me know what phone number you are calling from so that you can be recognized to speak. I do see that we have one member of the public joining us with their hand up, so I'm wondering, Trish, if you keep your hand up if you would like to offer public comment, and we will unmute you. Or I think you'll need to unmute yourself. Sorry about that. And if you could keep your comments to two minutes or less, that would be great.
Okay, it looks like that I can't turn on my camera, so I'll just go ahead. I have two citywide concerns about the frequent transit route upzoning. And the first is, is Seattle traffic is a mess and seems like there's only a few functioning arterials. And some of the fastest of those are through the single-family residential neighborhoods. However, I'm concerned that the ONE Seattle Plan proposes to clog those arterials with multifamily housing. And as far as I understand, the ONE Seattle Plan did not include traffic commute time studies. And so it just seems like, just like we wouldn't put, you know, driveways off I-5 with severely slow traffic. I'm wondering why they're doing the same with the arterials. And once those Seattle arterials are congested, there's no making more arterials. So I have a real big concern about this planning idea. And my request would be for them to remove the frequent transit route upzones until they planned in protected transit corridors and studied how transit is going to move. And then my second concern about frequent transit routes, and I just wanted to make the city aware of this, is that it seems like a lot of, well, some of those routes that they've added lose transit during snow and ice. And the idea behind those was that those residents of density didn't need to be by retail or services because they could rely on transit. But when transit is randomly canceled, you know, for hours or days because of snow and ice, that strands those residents. And additionally, the idea of planning density based on transit control by King County seems questionable to me. So again, my request would be that the frequent transit routes that lose traffic during snow and ice closures be removed from the frequent transit route upzoning. So thank you.
Thanks, Trish. I'm just quickly checking my email to see if anybody has emailed me. And I see no emails, and I'm toggling back, and I don't see any of our other guests raising their hand. So, Michaela, I will turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. I think that moves us on to our first agenda item. Staff from the Office of Planning and Community Development are joining us to provide an overview of the proposed interim legislation to implement House Bill 1110. We have an hour for this agenda item. And with that, I welcome Michael Hubner and Brennan Staley from the Office of Planning and Community Development. Just noting that we have, since we have an hour for the agenda item, please leave 30 minutes for questions and comments. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for having me. This is Brennan Staley. I'm a strategic advisor in the Office of Planning and Community Development, part of the Cop Plan team, and I'm the project lead for the zoning update. I think Michael is not going to be joining today, but that's okay because I'm planning to do the presentation. So I am going to share my screen now and queue up a PowerPoint presentation. This is the same PowerPoint presentation that we did for council last week. And so I'm hoping people can see this now.
Yep.
Great. Okay, so the topic again is the interim legislation. This would be a temporary piece of legislation that would allow us to comply with the basic elements of House Bill 1110 with the idea that it would be in place for a short period of time until permanent legislation could be enacted. So we'll talk a little bit about the background on state requirements, then talk mostly about the legislation itself, and then some of the topics that are not in the legislation but would be considered as part of the permanent. So again, the primary purpose of this legislation is to comply with HB 1110. But it is also important to note that it would also implement changes to some other state law that also have deadlines. One is the House Bill 1293, which requires that design standards be clear and objective. Another Senate Bill 6015, which has some implications for how we regulate off-street parking. And then House Bill 1287, which requires changes to the electric vehicle charging that we require for private development. So I think people here are very aware of HB 1110, so I won't spend time on it. But I do think it's important to note that, you know, the requirements for allowing additional density in housing types are kind of the main thing people think about. But there are other provisions as well, provisions that require that middle development standards and private review for middle housing can't be more restrictive than for single-family. It also requires us to remove parking requirements for middle housing around major transit stops. And so we want to, you know, comply with all of those changes. And obviously, if we don't pass the interim, then the state's model code would go in effect on June 30. Obviously, I think the important context here is that, you know, this bill would primarily affect our neighborhood residential zones, which are about two-thirds of the city. It would also have implications for low-rise zones and for middle housing that occurs in other parts of the city. And I think as you're aware, middle housing in this context meets a wide variety of housing formats in a kind of three-story format or less. So the general approach of this interim legislation is that it, you know, it's intended to comply with HB 1110, but not go well beyond that. So the interim legislation only modifies those standards that are either addressed explicitly in the state's model ordinance or are otherwise needed to comply with the state law. Either those provisions in the middle housing bill that talk about how development standards can't be more restrictive for middle housing than other housing types, or those other pieces of state law that I mentioned. Where the state's model ordinance and the proposed permanent legislation are generally similar, we are proposing to use the specific standards in the draft permanent legislation. And the idea being there that, you know, for housing builders, this is a difficult time because a lot of people are planning projects not knowing whether they will actually get, you know, permits will get applied for under this interim legislation or the permanent one. And so where they're close, we want to make this as close to the permanent legislation as possible. So there aren't issues where somebody applies, you know, maybe just after the permanent legislation goes into effect, and suddenly their projects no longer comply. Lastly, the interim legislation does include a number of things that are required for all interim legislation, the context and rationale for the legislation, the length of time the interim legislation would be in effect, and that's a maximum of one year. And then a work plan to prepare permanent legislation. And obviously, that's ultimately going to be decided by council. However, we're planning on forwarding the permanent legislation in May so that they can take it up kind of immediately after the interim legislation if they choose to. So there are primarily, you know, the major changes to neighborhood residential zones are in those development standards, which I'm going to walk through briefly. The major place where the interim legislation and the permanent legislation are truly different is in the number of units. The interim legislation is really doing the minimum necessary to comply with state law. And so it would not get rid of the minimum lot sizes that we have existing today, but rather would allow up to four units per lot or six units if it's near major transit, or if two are affordable on existing lots. However, if you try to subdivide a lot afterwards, then those subdivided lots would not be allowed that additional density. So you couldn't subdivide and get more density and more density. The permanent legislation takes a very different tact. Obviously, it does comply with state law, but the primary regulation of the number of units is a density limit of one unit per 1,250 square feet. So under that density limit, you know, the number of units on a lot is proportional to the size of your lot. Under this interim legislation, you just get the four or six units, no matter if you have a 5,000-square-foot lot or 100,000-square-foot lot. The second one is on FAR. Here, the very similar, the interim legislation would have a sliding scale, so incrementally more FAR with more density. And that FAR would vary from 0.6 with, if you have one unit on a lot, up to 1.2 if you have four or more units. That is consistent with the permanent legislation, except that the permanent legislation also proposes to have additional bonuses for stacked flats in certain areas and for low-income housing. For the remainder of the things, the development standards I'm going to talk through, they're actually exactly the same for the interim and the permanent. And that would be a height limit of 32 feet plus pitched roofs, a lot coverage of 50%, front setbacks of 10 feet, rear setbacks of 10 feet or zero if from an alley, side setbacks of five feet and zero if from an alley. And just important to note that there are also requirements to have, if you have garage-style alleys, they have to. You have to have a reasonable turning radius, so there are reasons why garages might, will be set back more than zero feet from an alley. Changes to residential small lot zone. Again, in the permanent legislation, we would be getting rid of RSL zones and reasoning them to the rise one. We are not doing that with the interim. Instead, we'd be simply updating them so that they comply with the density limits in HB 1110. We would increase the height, sorry, should say RSL zones, up to 32 feet, similar to neighborhood residential zones. And we'd also increase the floor area so that it'd be proportional to the floor area in neighborhood residential zones. So more kind of smaller tweaks, again, to comply with the state law. There are a variety of other changes as well. We are updating various zoning standards in low-rise zones to comply, again, both with HB 1110 and also the requirement that our design standards be clear and objective. Those are largely consistent, again, with what was proposed in the permanent ordinance. Things like moving from setbacks that vary by building type to having one set of setbacks, consistent with what already applies for townhouses. Similar for other things like facade limits, having a consistent set of standards. And then also making a number of changes to the design standards to remove design standards that don't meet that clear and objective standard, and also to make them more consistent across building types. The other one, which again comes straight from state law, is that we would remove residential parking requirements for middle housing within a half mile of major transit stops. A little bit different than the permanent legislation, which removes them for all housing within a half mile of major transit, and also goes farther beyond that to have a reduction in other areas. This would just be for middle housing, which is defined to be generally all of the different residential housing types that are within a three-story height limit or less. Yeah. To comply with Senate Bill 6015, we would have some pretty small modifications to parking space size. The largest, large-size parking spaces would have to be, wouldn't have to be quite as large. And we'd also allow tandem parking to count as two full spaces. We would also modify standards for pedestrian access and circulation and access easement requirements consistent with HB 1110. Basically, today, a number of those vary by building type, and we would make it consistent across all the building types. We also exempt middle housing from bike parking requirements, consistent with HB 1110. So today, there are no bike parking requirements for, you know, detached, single-family homes. And so in the, again, the short term, just to simply comply with what would happen if the model ordinance went into effect, we will remove those from all middle housing and obviously consider a broader change as part of the permanent. And then lastly, updating the EV charging requirements as required by state law. Just at a high level, those, so again, we have existing standards today. They only apply to when people choose to provide parking. So if you don't provide any parking, you're not required to have any EV charging spaces. But if you do, a portion of those have to be set aside as EV-ready spaces, so not necessarily having a charger, but having the wiring and the hookup box there so you can add a charger easily. And then in general, you know, if you have a very, for small developments, 100% of of EV spaces have to be EV-ready for residential. In larger buildings, it's about 25% today, and it goes up to 45% of spaces, so roughly doubling the number in larger buildings. And then similarly for commercial, it is going from a smaller number, but also about doubling the requirement for commercial buildings. So my last slide here is just to kind of point out that there is a really large number of things that are proposed for the interim legislation that are not, sorry, for the permanent legislation that are not in the interim. Again, the basic concept is to kind of do the minimum required to comply. And then, you know, once our CEPA process has been complete to go beyond that, obviously, the, you know, the permanent legislation is our first comprehensive update of neighborhood residential zones since 1982. So there's a wide variety of things we want to accomplish with that. And plus, there's other changes we want to make to kind of meet other city goals. So I won't read this list, but there, you know, there's a lot of stuff in the permanent legislation that's not in the interim. So that's my presentation. So we have a lot of time to answer questions.
Thank you, Brennan. You went through that so fast that I forgot to ask people to start putting their name in the queue. So I'll kill a little bit of time. I'll, folks, put their names in the chat. Really appreciate you keeping us abreast. I know you've been really focused on making sure council's aware of what's going on. But we care too, and we really like value that you came today to give us this presentation. My feeling is not anything that you as staff can address, but if you do have a chance to convey the message, I would just underscore that time is of the essence with the permanent legislation, the list of things that we are hoping to accomplish on that last The list of things that we are hoping to accomplish on that last slide are so critical to our future. And so while the interim legislation is beneficial, I I really just want the message to come through that getting, getting all of our ducks in a row and getting the permanent legislation passed matters a lot for our future. And then I have a weedy technical question. And it's my understanding that zoning needs to be consistent with a comprehensive plan. And right now, we're operating under the existing comprehensive plan. So is there companion legislation moving forward to amend the current comprehensive plan? So this interim legislation is consistent? I'm just kind, I'm kind of technically curious.
No, there is not. And there are also requirements about how often we can amend a comprehensive plan in a year. But yeah, the simple answer is no.
Okay. Okay. So again, maybe another reason why time is of the essence so that we have zoning legislation that is consistent with our comprehensive plan. All right. I think I've killed enough time. I see some names. I am going to go in the order of folks who have to leave early. And so I'm actually going to jump over Nick and go to Andy next. Oh, wait.
Quick question. Yeah, you said ADU is not in the legislation. What is the status of ADU? I thought they were allowed.
Yeah. So there is actually a separate piece of legislation that is already in the land use committee that would comply with the 1337, which is the ADU legislation. So that's actually a separate piece of legislation. If you are also interested, there's going to be a separate piece of legislation about updating the design review process as well. So yeah, so those changes will go forward on that. Obviously, in the permanent legislation, then there'll be a need to kind of rectify those two things since we're, you know, changing the standards for neighborhood residential so thoroughly. So there'll be some additional changes. But yeah, that separate piece of legislation will bring us into compliance with 1337.
Okay. But ADUs are allowed or encouraged now or are there barriers now for CL?
Yeah, they are already allowed now. And frankly, the number of changes we need to make to comply with 1337 are pretty small. We are mostly in compliance with it. Yeah. So it's smaller tweaks, really.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm getting an anxious text from Jamie saying, oh, my God, did we jump over Nick? Just, just restating that we have a few folks who have to leave early. And so I'm prioritizing hearing from them so we don't, we don't miss their chance. I will come back to you, Nick. So I'm going to call on Matt Hutchins next.
Yeah, I just had a couple of quick comments. Let's see. One, I'm, I'm very glad that we're holding line on keeping MHA out of NR. MHA is, the recent study looks like it clips about one in four market units and is producing fewer and fewer affordable housing units elsewhere. So I'm glad that they're holding line on that. I'm, I'm a little worried in general that the interim legislation is going to become the final legislation, which I'm sure you probably are worried as well. And that would mean that there would be no, no stacked flats or affordable housing within those, within those zones. And any idea on the timeline of the design review piece or the ADU piece?
The ADU pieces in the land use committee, they've already had a meeting on it. I don't remember the specific, but I think that the hearing comes pretty soon. Certainly the idea is they want to have it adopted by May 30th at the latest to be in compliance with the June 30th deadline. In terms of the design review piece, I, I do not know. That is not, yeah, it certainly hasn't been transmitted yet, but I don't know the timeline for it.
Okay, great. That was it.
All right. Nick, you're up.
All right. Thanks, Brennan, for the presentation and complex topic. I know we all have been pretty invested in and have followed it, but I would say your presentation makes it easy for anyone to follow. So just appreciate that. And then also hopeful that the permanent regulations will move quickly, that we don't need to take that full year that you all are giving yourselves to ultimately, I hope, go beyond baseline requirements of 1110 as we are the largest city in the state. We are, we should be positioning ourselves to lead on expanding housing choices and opportunities. And it makes sense to do more and not less. So I'm really looking forward to what that permanent legislation looks like. I have kind of a weedy question maybe on ADUs as well. So how are you all looking at ADUs in relation to the required unit densities under 1110? Knowing that 1110 says you may include ADUs as part of that unit density? Are ADUs being counted towards that minimum or are they being treated separately?
So I probably should, you know, pull up my legislation to make sure I'm saying things correctly. It is, it's a little bit complicated because the, so the, the ADU compliance bill is agnostic about whether they count or not. So that would, but then our, our approach is that that ADUs will count towards density standards. So you don't, you don't essentially get like four units and six units plus a bunch of accessory dwelling units, but rather you get four to six units, including the accessory dwelling units.
So then it would be like a duplex and because 1337 says you have to allow two ADUs per lot. So then it would be like a duplex and then two ADUs or two kind of middle housing units and then ADUs if people go that route.
That's right.
Okay. That's disappointing, but I understand you're, you're trying to comply with the baseline. So this is not directed at you, Brennan. Thanks.
I'm sorry, my internet just popped, cut out for a second. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Yes.
We heard you for a minute, Michaela, but you did cut off a little bit. Cut out.
Go to Dylan while we wait for Michaela.
Yeah, Vanessa, do you want me to step in while Michaela's reconnecting?
Super. That would be great. I think we have Dylan in the queue.
Okay. And Matt has his hand raised as well. Matt, are you, are you trying to be in the queue again?
No, no, I, my hand is not coming down of some other technical issue.
Okay. We'll go, we'll go to Dylan.
Fun with technology.
Hey, Brennan, thanks for the presentation. Really helpful to understand kind of the difference between the two that are happening here. So we're all very anxious hopefully see the permanent legislation coming soon. In light of that, a couple of questions. One, has there been any updates on the appeal process? I know you're really marginally involved, but I just haven't heard anything and just curious if there's been any other you guys are following and kind of where things are at, at the moment.
Yeah. So there were six appeals. Now, four of them have been dismissed outright and half of, of one has been, half the issues on one have been dismissed. The hearing examiner hopes to rule on whether the entire thing will be dismissed based on the kind of new state laws about SEPA for housing. That hopefully will be in the next week or so. And then the actual hearing will start at the very end of April. And, you know, probably will be two to three weeks long. And then at that point, the judge will have to, the hearing examiner, sorry, will have to, you know, consider what they heard and issue a ruling. They still hope, they hope to have that ruling by the second week of June.
Gotcha. If they dismiss it, then that's it? Or is there still a hearing that's required?
No, but if, if they dismiss it, then there, that would be the end of it. Yeah.
Second question, any updates regarding supplemental EIS for urban and regional centers?
Nope, we're still planning on doing that work. You know, we're starting to, working on the scoping and the consultant process right now. But I guess that's about it, though.
And last question. So I understand you guys are going to provide counsel with the proposed permanent NR neighborhood residential legislation in May to kind of allow them to get a head start, fingers crossed, on reviewing that. Additionally, curious what the plan is, what the strategy is for the corridors and neighborhood centers, which I understand, you know, based off the work you guys have already done are fairly well evolved. And is there a plan to provide that legislation to counsel anytime soon to get them moving on that as well? Or just kind of wondering, what's the strategy for kind of trying to get this moving as quick as possible? Understand the complications that we're currently dealing with in terms of appeal and the HB 1110.
Yeah. So in the centers and corridors legislation, we're moving expeditiously to try and get it done to have a draft. It's, or sorry, a final that is, could go to council. However, in terms of the actual timeline for transmitting that to council or having council take it up, that is still an open question. Obviously, you know, council's really in the driver's seat there. But we're, we're working with them to try and figure out what, how they want, might, might want to do that.
Thank you.
All right, I am back. I'm sorry about that. My internet kicked me out for a minute. Thank you for proceeding without me. I, back when I got cut off, I was going to ask Vanessa if she could remind us how we had commented on whether or not ADUs should count towards the, how, whether or not ADUs should be included in counting the, the six units. And Vanessa, were you able to find that comment letter?
I am working on it.
I just dropped it in the chat of the highlight from and we said, when counting unit density on a lot, exclude ADUs. So I highlighted that in the, the stamp there.
Thank you. Maybe my internet is still being problematic. I can see you've dropped something, but I can't see any content. Can others see content?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Okay. I'll trust you.
It says, when counting unit density on a lot, exclude attached accessory dwelling units. That's the, that's the bullet point.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other, I don't see any other names in the queue in the chat. Any other questions or feedback for Brennan?
Maybe one more, if that's okay. Just on House Bill 1293, Brennan, do you foresee any kind of change in how design review boards might operate under proposed legislation? Or is that process, you're envisioning some changes or any, yeah, anything you can share on that front? I think I'd be interested in hearing.
Great. Yeah. I mean, so again, just procedurally, you know, in terms of our design standards, there's what we call design standards, which are those things that apply if you don't go through design review. And then the other half is if you do go design review, then the design standards are design guidelines. And so the interim legislation and the permanent legislation to comply with HB 1110, they address only the design standards part of it. And then again, there's a separate piece of legislation which is being developed by SDCI that is a kind of comprehensive update to the approach of design review. And that, you know, that's looking at everything, you know, to the, you know, administrative versus board versus other things and, you know, the, the, the design guidelines themselves. So that, that's a, that's the whole, that's a whole separate piece of legislation that's being developed by SDCI. And so unfortunately, I can't give kind of like a quick summary of what that is likely to look like.
Okay, thanks. It'd be great, Vanessa, if we could have someone from SDCI share that at a meeting too.
Sounds good.
Believe we are way ahead of schedule. I don't see our next guest speakers in the audience yet. So it is not too late to speak up if you want to ask a question or provide feedback.
Michaela, I don't know if it's visible to folks. This is Michael Hubner. I've joined the meeting.
Welcome.
Just caught the tail end of Brennan's, you and I with folks. In case there are any questions that anybody wants to direct to me, I'm here.
Okay, ask another question, Michaela?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It just may be related to the outreach piece or what you're envisioning, kind of the process after you complete the sort of baseline requirements through this interim ordinance. What, what is it going to take for policymakers to feel comfortable now about a permanent package? So how are you all kind of mapping out the process to get that to the council? And is that involving kind of additional outreach or what, what is that looking like?
Yeah, we are not planning on doing a new phase of outreach. We are, you know, basically have gone through what we've heard and we've summarized it and we're considering it and using that to guide changes to the legislation. But then basically the next step for us is to finalize that legislation and send it to council. You know, COVTEL obviously will have their own public engagement, you know, hearings and things like that. But we are not planning anymore. So the next step is just to transmit it. And obviously, you know, then at that point, that'll, it'll be made available to the public as well.
Well, and
How about the planning commission?
Sorry, I consider you to be part of the public if that's the question.
Thank you.
We'll be sending it to you along with, yeah, at the same time, send it to everybody else.
A very special part of the public.
Yeah.
No, I would just want to add to this. And Brennan, you can reframe this if, if, if you want, being the author of the legislation, but one of the things that we hope will help in going from interim to permanent legislation is where it was appropriate mirroring some of the very same development standards that Brennan probably covered this, that, that, that there is a lot of commonality between the interim and the permanent that should help. It's not like it's an entirely new set of development standards and provisions. There will be some additional things in there and some key differences like around how density is calculated and all of that, which I, again, I'm sure Brennan covered. But there are also a lot of things that are not different.
I continue to have computer problems. So sorry about that delay.
The question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and Matt kind of mentioned this and we've kind of touched on it a little bit as well, but just temporary versus the permanent. Just curious if you guys have a feel for valid concerns, concerns of the temporary legislation becoming the permanent and that we lose something. Is there any feel for where council stands in terms of their appetite for, you know, really seeing this as an interim legislation and being ready to jump on the permanent? Is there, do you have, does OPCD have any read on where council stands in terms of really being intent on this, just being a temporary passage and ready to jump onto the permanent? Or do we, actually, we have concerns? Should we be talking to council members to make sure that they are ready to jump onto the permanent when that's available?
Council prognostication is not in our job description generally. But I have a couple of quick thoughts on that. One is, there's always that risk with interim legislation and it's, it's complicated too. And Brennan's doing an amazing job, you know, now helping the council navigate through this idea of interim legislation. It's complicated. We have two pieces of legislation essentially are getting at the same thing, but just have different sideboards on them and different, you know, they're different things, right? So there's that. And there's certainly a bit of, you know, fatigue of councils as they go through a set of issues. And hopefully, well, again, because we have some of the very same development standards across a number of points, it's not like we hope they won't have to debate those again. But what I would say is what we have heard, and you'll have to go, you know, go look at the council meetings yourselves, the select committee meetings yourselves. There are provisions in the permanent legislation that council has said they are interested and care about. Everything from tree, plant, Everything from tree planting to incentives for affordability above and beyond 1110 to other stacked flats. That suggests to me that they will be very interested in the permanent legislation to get at things that they have said they care about. Because the interim legislation not, will not likely allow them to do all those things. But they always, they always look forward to hearing from the Planning Commission to tell them to get on it with the permanent legislation. We obviously think the permanent legislation is the right legislation and that's why we drafted it, right? So, yeah, I mean, any words of encouragement and, you know, helping council keep their eyes on the ball here, I think is, is, is welcome input.
helpful to know that they'll be getting it in, in May, in late, late May, so we can kind of time our communication.
Appreciate the transparency. My computer is for some reason not holding a charge, so if I, if I disappear again, I'm gonna go get on my phone or something. And so Jamie, would you be willing to step in if I disappear?
Yes, I, I.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I think, Vanessa, do we have our next set of guest speakers here yet? If you, if you're saying something, I cannot hear you, Vanessa.
Sorry, I had us muted. Some background noise. Vanessa's gonna go check and see if one of our first presenter or next presenters is here in the hall. So I think maybe we could take a brief pause.
Yeah.
Should we take a, should we take a five minute break till four then?
Yes. Well, let's come back at four o'clock. Brennan and Michael, thank you so much for coming. Really appreciated the briefing.
Thank you, Brennan.
Thank you.
Yeah. Bye. All right, I'm gonna call folks back to the meeting. It's four o'clock. Hi, John. I see one of our guest speakers is in the room. Vanessa, do we have Scott Bonjukian as well?
Not yet. He's usually punctual, so he'll probably be here in about, he'll be here at least 4:15 at the latest.
Okay.
Probably a few minutes early. He's an early kind of guy. I'm usually just on time kind of guy.
Yeah, we're, we're ahead of schedule, so he's not.
Yes. Yeah, I took public transit today instead of riding my bike, so I gave myself a big cushion.
Yes, it's not, not a, with the, with the rain, it's not the best day for.
There is. See, I told you.
Hi there.
We're ahead of schedule, Scott. We're ready to go.
Take your time. No need to rush. It rarely does, but as John was saying, everybody's just so excited to get to this agenda.
Yeah. Clear the schedule.
Michaela, I'm wondering if we want to do another quick round of introductions for the sake of our guests?
And we might find out, make sure that folks are actually background line. Nobody has their camera on yet. I know, thanks. All right. Well, we'll get started with a quick round of introductions for our next round of guest speakers. I can do a little bit of, sorry, I had to switch computers and I don't have my speaking notes in front of me. I probably can speak a little extemporaneously and Vanessa can sweep up if I'm forgetting anything. But we have two folks who've long been involved in the LID I-5 initiative. John Fight and Scott Bonjukian, here to brief us on the LID I-5 project. So John and Scott, hi, nice to see both of you. I know both of you very well. We did some early advocacy on the LID I-5 project to secure some funding for feasibility analysis. And I use she/her pronouns. My name is Michaela Dufferin, and I work in affordable housing policy and planning. And I'll pass it to Jamie.
Everyone, Jamie Strobel, I use she/her pronouns, and I co-chair with Michaela. I live in the future 130th Station area and I work in climate change and environmental justice. And I will pass to Nick.
Hello, Nick Whipple. I use he/him pronouns. I live in West Seattle in the North Del Ridge neighborhood. And for my day job, I'm a planner on the east side. How about Dylan Stevenson?
Hello everyone. My name is Dylan Stevenson. I use he/him pronouns and I live in the Belltown neighborhood. And for my day job, I teach urban planning in the urban design and planning department at the University of Washington. And I'll pass it along to Andrew.
Hi, Andy Danenberg. Live in northeast Seattle. He/him pronouns. And I also teach at University of Washington in both public health and urban planning. The other Dylan, maybe? I'm keeping track very well.
Hi, Dylan Glosecki. I use he/him pronouns. I live in the Central District. I am an architect with Perkins Eastman, working on mid-rise and high-rise multifamily and urban infrastructure projects. About, let's see, Jamie?
I already went, but I will pass to Rose.
Hey, I'm Rose Lucello. It's in pronouns. They them. I am up north in Lipton Springs and I work for Jacobs as a wetland biologist and permitting specialist for my day job. Pass to Caleb.
Hello, my name's Caleb Tolday. He/him pronouns. I live in Beacon Hill and I work at Rainier Sellers. And I'll pass it to Cecilia.
Hi, this is Cecilia. She/her pronouns. And I live in the Roosevelt neighborhood, North Seattle. And I work at Disley Rights Washington as a community organizer where I work with non-drivers and people with disabilities on housing and transportation. And I'm, I'm joining the club of people with connectivity issues and I cannot, still can't see any participants. So I'm gonna have someone else select someone.
I can hop in.
Oh, we'll go Matt.
Okay, I'll call on Deanna next. So be ready. Matt Malloy, I use he/him pronouns. I live in the Green Lake neighborhood. I work as a substitute teacher and also at a restaurant, which I'll be commuting to now, but I'm looking forward to listen. And I'll pass to Deanna.
Thank you. Hi, John and Scott. Great to see you virtually. Deanna Quintanilla, she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill and for my day job, I'm a multimodal transportation planner. Not sure who hasn't gone.
I think all the commissioners have gone. We'll just quickly move on to staff. John, Scott, Vanessa Murdock, she/her pronouns, staff to the commission. John?
I am John Hoy. I use he/him pronouns and staff to the commission.
I, Olivia Baker, she/her pronouns, and staff to the commission. Is Robin still with us?
Robin hopped off. So back to you, Michaela, to then turn it over to Scott and John.
Wonderful. Well, I'm, we're looking forward to the briefing. We like to leave a lot of time for Q and A. And I think we have an hour for this agenda item, so if you could keep your briefing, is it Vanessa? Is it 30 minutes? Okay.
Thirty minutes.
All right. Take it away, John and Scott.
Hello, everyone. I'm Scott Bonjukian. He/him pronouns, co-chair of the LID I-5 Steering Committee. Live in West Seattle and work downtown as a urban design consultant.
John Fight, live on Capitol Hill. I'm a retired architect.
Great. Well, thanks, everyone, for your interest and for staff for inviting us. I think we've presented to the Planning Commission maybe once before, many, many moons ago. So we're here with an update. We, of course, I, I do recognize quite a few faces on the call today, but figure this is, it's a good time to give an update on the project, give a briefing on where we're at, given the new federal funding we're working with. And it'd be great to get some sort of feedback from all the, the big thinkers on the commission. Go to the next slide.
Sorry, it's very sensitive. Hold on.
So we are a grassroots group. We're not even organized as a nonprofit, but we work under the wings of the Seattle Parks Foundation, which sponsors about a hundred other community groups across the city and perhaps beyond the city, advocating for a public space and access to nature and things of that sort. We've got a broad coalition. This is just a small piece of it, but we work with a lot of different organizations that are interested in everything from the environment to affordable housing to multimodal transportation and the design community. And our role, if you go to the next slide, has been to really just elevate this conversation over the last decade or so. We have been hosting all kinds of workshops. We do walking and biking tours every summer, a variety of presentations, and we talk to the media a lot as well. And our goal has just been to inject this idea of rectifying the past harms of the Interstate 5 freeway construction through our central neighborhoods. And so to that end, we don't have a specific design or program in mind at this point, but we've really been trying to push the conversation along and keep it at the top of the, the public agenda with both community members and our elected leaders. Next slide. And so like I said, we've been working on this in our current incarnation for a decade. Before John and I got involved, there were other various advocacy groups over the years, starting with folks that protested the freeway construction in the 1950s and 60s. Groups that advocated for getting Freeway Park and the Convention Center built. And then eventually our group came along in the, the 2010s decade as our economic engine was going even further and the Convention Center was trying to expand in downtown. And so since then, I'll, I think most of these points we'll cover in the next few slides, but we've had a lot of funding and policy success to date. Next slide. And so we're here mostly today to talk about the center city and the Yester Terrace area. And the map kind of shows topographically based on where the freeway is depressed below the surrounding neighborhoods and the street level, kind of the ideal candidate sites across the city where reconnections can happen on top of the freeway. And, but I will note that the university district has emerged as kind of a second chapter that's had some success and interest. And they also received a federal grant recently to do some feasibility analysis work. And so we've seen Lids, they can be used to anything from parks to supporting buildings. And there's, they're kind of a win-win project in that they can kind of keep the transportation function while also capping the noise and pollution associated with that transportation in some areas. Next. So just a couple of quick examples. These are, these renderings are about six years old at this point, but these are part of a, a DON funded grant program that we did in a, for a year-long process with a bunch of volunteer designers and advocates. And if you go to the next slide, you just kind of see some quick examples of what, what the potential scale of the intervention is to provide several acres of new publicly owned space in the heart of the city. Next slide. And I'll just say, while we are focused very locally, of course, we are pleased that we've gotten national attention. And we've also been connected with other LID advocates and project managers and designers and developers in cities all across the country through our advocacy. So we've got a lot of lessons learned from other projects that were, that helped feed into our project here in Seattle. Next. So our milestone piece of work was working with the City of Seattle and Washita to complete a feasibility study in 2020, funded by the Convention Center Expansion Project. This study had a large consultant team headed up by WSP and they concluded pretty clearly that the project would be expensive and challenging, but would also be worthwhile for the, kind of the economic, environmental and social benefits that it could unlock, not only for the city, but also the wider region at large. Next. So just a couple of snips. This, this first study looked at specifically from Madison Street to Denny Way, which is about a three-quarter mile length. If we go to the next slide. The study did not have a preferred design or a specific recommendations, but really looked at the range of feasibility options for how you could lit over the segment of freeway. Kind of on the low end, low intensity version would be just all park space on the easier sites. On the other end would be partnering with private development to develop more dense buildings. On the other end would be partnering with private development to develop more dense buildings. And then the middle ground, test case number three, was more of a hybrid with kind of parks and some smaller buildings focused on affordable housing and perhaps civic uses. And so those were all used to test the engineering implications, the cost implications, and also the governance and maintenance implications for all those different types of scenarios. So I think it's really great, and we've kind of been working in that universe and talking to the community to use these as kind of to demonstrate the trade-offs that are going to come with the project. Next. I don't expect everyone to read this, but just a quick snapshot of some of the stats ranging from 11 to 17 acres of new space, potentially hundreds or thousands of housing units, and a potential commercial and civic space as well. Next. As far as who benefits, based on the census data available at the time, the neighborhoods and blocks within walking distance of the study area are more diverse than the city as a whole. They're mostly renters. People earn less money. People are much less likely to own cars, for example, but also have a much less access to open space than compared to other outer neighborhoods and even some of our peer city downtown. So definitely, we see it as a project to equally benefits a variety of populations representing a wide part of the community. Next slide. It's also interesting to talk about that in terms of investments with public dollars, looking at how other freeway lids have been built across the Puget Sound area. The map on the right is showing census areas by income level, so the darker the color, the higher the household income is. And so you can see that's the suburban and more outlying affluent neighborhoods have had more success with advocating for freeway mitigation over time. And so if we can add on to Freeway Park in downtown and north and south of that, we can access or provide benefits to a variety of income levels. Next. There are some obvious potential environmental benefits. Noise reduction, air and oil, air pollution, urban heat island reduction, and treating stormwater runoff from the top neighborhoods down to our Puget Sound and Lake Union. So we would like to potentially study some more of that in detail as we get into the environmental process in the future stages. Next. This is all very timely now because a few years ago, WashDOT's received direction and funding from the state legislature to conduct a I-5 master plan across the entire state of Washington. So they're looking at the future of the corridor in terms of safety and maintenance, freight traffic, electric vehicles, autonomous vehicles, the full range of scenarios and needs for the corridor. And so this is an opportunity for Seattle to kind of put its vision forward for what it wants the future of the corridor to look like. They anticipate finishing their, this stage of the master plan, I think 2029 is last I heard. So this is a great opportunity for the city to kind of establish its vision and make sure WashDOT is aware of that, as opposed to being the other way around where the city falls onto a highway project. Next. I mentioned the variety of public policy supports. The project is endorsed in the Seattle Comprehensive Plan, Imagine Greater Downtown, which is kind of a precursor to the downtown suburb area plan that's being worked on right now. City Council passed a resolution a few years ago. Mayor Harrell has endorsed it in his downtown activation plan, and with the federal grants, we had to be acknowledged in the statewide transportation improvement program. So that's a pretty good resume, but there's certainly more we can add on to that. Next slide. So as follow-up to the 2020 feasibility study, we've been advocating to continue the momentum and keep things moving. 2023, we convinced the state legislature to provide a down payment of $200,000 to keep going with feasibility analysis and also acknowledging some of the post-pandemic realities. We wanted to look at affordable housing and commercial real estate more closely, and also reexamine some of the assumptions from the first study on some particular technical aspects. We also need to engage further with lower-income households that we haven't been able to reach yet. Next slide. I already mentioned, actually, we can go to the next one. I mentioned the city council resolution. We've also, we're successful in receiving one of three projects that have received federal funding recently for freeway mitigation projects. There were two programs passed by Congress during the pandemic to provide an infrastructure stimulus. First, Reconnect South Park received the grants to study mitigating Highway 99, Lit I-5, then received $2 million to, under a separate program that was a one-year program. And then just a few months ago, it was announced that the U District Partnership received one and a half million to study lighting I-5 in North Seattle. So very exciting, and it's nice to be that kind of coalition. And we'll talk more about that in a minute. Next slide. So yeah, we did receive that $2 million grants. We're currently working with OPCD staff on how to scope and budget that and what the qualification should be for consultants going forward. There's kind of two main parts to the grant funding that we're hoping to achieve. One is to really build project leadership and working with a stakeholder's group to guide the urban design vision and really get an idea of what, a more official and statistically valid idea of what the community wants this future land to be used for and to help tell a story of how it can improve people's lives. And then the second part will be some smaller technical products that we need to just keep the project moving in terms of some planning feasibility studies and engineering studies as well in the background. And I will say for those wondering, the grants money is appeared to be safe under the current federal actions. There was a grant agreement signed in December, which gives it a bit more teeth than some other unfortunate projects. Next. And I think I might leave it off here with John to start talking about the scope of our grants. So we have the original study area that we looked at in yellow here. And we also, in addition to those other areas of study and community engagement, we also expanded the geographic range that we want to look at, north a couple of blocks, and then south down towards the Yessler Terrace and Chinatown ID area as well. So with that, I think that's our last slide. Yeah, so.
Thanks, Scott. So as Scott said, we were awarded a grant about a year ago. Combined with the state funding is $2.2 million. And with that, as part of our proposal, we wanted, we expanded the site to the south significantly, basically doubling the study area. We'd always wanted to go south of Madison, even with the technical feasibility study, but given that that was tied to the Convention Center public benefits, we didn't want to spread too far away from the Convention Center itself, and Madison kind of seemed like the furthest we could go, more of an intuitive move. But now we're able to expand it further. None of that money has been spent yet. It probably won't start to be spent until August. All the work is to be done by consultants. There's no scope or money for the city work. And as Scott said, there's a couple of important things to note is WashDOT is doing their I-5 master plan. And Julie Meredith, who's the new Secretary of WashDOT, was at an event we had in February, so a couple of months ago, where she said, and her staff has said this previously, they see the work we're doing as critical to their evolution of the master plan in terms of getting a feeling of what Seattle wants, at least for that segment of Interstate 5, and that the work we're doing will be incorporated and recognized into the master plan, which is just kind of a nice serendipitous coincidence that we got the grant while they're undergoing this work. So the money's being allocated, about half of it is to come up with what we're calling an urban design vision, and that isn't, doesn't necessarily mean, and it is unlikely to mean, that people will say, we want this here. We want all these to be streets. We want parks, this and that in certain locations. It's more likely to be an aspirational list of what the community would like to see there while recognizing there's still many additional stages to do in order to realize that vision. And one of the reasons, or the main reason, we're calling it a vision, and it goes back to the technical feasibility study, is I think the number one recommendation for that was to create a champion for the project to lead it through. And that's something we know, it's something others have said, but it just reinforced that. So instead of a champion, we would still like a champion, but what this urban design vision is really meant to do is to create a bunch of champions. So by having an embedded stakeholders group, much like the Central Waterfront, and we're mirroring our project pretty much on the playbook of the Central Waterfront, incorporating lessons learned, is to have a stakeholders group that is involved, that is in effect the de facto client for the work done by the consultants and is even involved in consultant selection, so that they in turn can become so enthused and so embedded in the process that they end up advocating for. So they really have decision-making ability, but they also represent certain constituencies. Say, at neighborhood level, the CID, Capitol Hill, Denny Triangle, the citywide advocacy groups, Seattle Parks Foundation, Transportation Choices, Lehigh, and then perhaps at even larger level, Mount St. Sound Greenway, the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Coalition. So there'll be kind of this pyramid and layering of interest groups and advocates. So that's, that's an important part of it. And that's especially important for engaging communities such as the CID, which, as many as you know, feels estranged, disenfranchised, run over by a lot of city projects and a lot of city process, and we're cognizant of that. And I think for that community in particular, especially since they're new to our project, being very careful and thoughtful about how we engage with them. In fact, we've had two events, two beer and cultures, which are panel discussions that our group is funding. It's outside the grant funding. The third one is next Thursday, April 17th, and it is at Wing Luke Museum, which is obviously a major cultural institution, the CID. And one of the panelists is Anne Huen, who is the Program and Outreach Coordinator for SCPTA, the Public Development Authority in the CID, as well as Marshall Foster, who obviously brings his waterfront experience to bear, as well as some other distinguished folks. I intend you to encourage that, but this is a way of saying we had these beer and cultures, this kind of a soft introduction to the project, to the public, to generate enthusiasm and generate buzz and interest in it before we kind of set out seriously to do the work. And the beer and cultures fall in a long tradition. We're hosting these with Allied Arts. They had beer and cultures all about the waterfront. The Pike Place Market is something that has a 50-year history, so we're pretty excited about those projects or that process and getting in on that, and also the Seattle Parks Foundation has been involved in it as well. But yeah, that's kind of a quick update as to where we are in the money. Yeah, and I think Scott gave the kind of basic baskets. It's him, but lots more to discuss, but we welcome your questions.
All right. Thank you so much for the briefing. I will say that there were a couple of requests in the chat box while you were talking. So one asked for a copy of the slides because there were, it's a lot of information on them. And then Vanessa posted a link to the event that you were describing at the Wing Luke Museum where you can register. All right, Jamie has put her name into the chat, so I'm going to call on her first.
I thank you both for presenting that. I just, as someone who's worked in the CID neighborhood for a very long time, I have a particular interest in this potential expansion further south, especially since I-5 literally changes shape as well, going to an elevated structure in that neighborhood. And there's also a very long history in that neighborhood of I-5 as something that has split the neighborhood. I appreciate that you answered some of the, some of the, what I was going to ask, which is around like, what has your level of engagement been there thus far? But I, I think what I would, I would say is particularly in that neighborhood, that the relationship building is so critical and to follow the lead of the folks in that neighborhood. I, I'm kind of disappointed. Actually, there are more folks from the CID on that panel or a part of that panel. The, the, there's so many people that often come into the neighborhood with like an agenda and, and it's often not received well when it, when it comes in that way, even if it's, even if it might be something beneficial to the neighborhood. So I, I just want to reiterate, like, the approach there is going to have to be different than in other places that, that I-5 is passing through. It's not going to be the same as like downtown or, or other, other places that like the U District, all that. And, and there is a long history of kind of getting brought into other people's projects and then, you know, put as the, the like, oh, look, we're helping these communities who've, and, and then kind of getting screwed later. Not that you all could do that, but like, but because of that history, there's a deep kind of like distrust often of like, what is your agenda? And what are you coming in on, right? And so I, I would just like spend more time than you think, more resources than you think, and, and really try to, really try to build those relationships. But I'm curious, like, since you all have wanted to move south for a while, how you're approaching elevated versus not elevated in that feasibility? And like, what your initial thinking might be on that, where you're planning to? Because I can also imagine community partners in the CID being like, what are you going to do for us that is going to solve some of our connectivity issues, green space issues, safety issues? Especially like, there's already an existing issue with the underpass and I-5 and the CID. So I'm just like anticipating some of the, the questions you're likely to get and probably already have gotten.
Okay, well, that's interesting because we've had, as recently as this morning, discussions about, for lack of a better term, rebranding our effort. When it was between Madison and Denny, it was very clearly in a canyon. It was about lighting. But under the sage advice of many people we've met with the past year, and I think we're finally getting it, is, it's not really about the object itself. It's about what it accomplishes. So it's reconnecting people and reconnecting communities. So getting away from, you know, we need a new name. We'll work on it. Litting I-5 to reconnecting communities, however that might be. So it will vary, you know, obviously from an elevated highway to a sunken highway. Those are different solutions and different ways to reconnect. So that's one thing, is not, you know, saying a lid solves everything, but getting back to really what the intent of it is, is reconnecting communities. We certainly tried, and I tried especially hard to get more folks in the CID on board, used every avenue we knew to get interest in panelists. Unfortunately, Anne was the only one who expressed interest, so, you know, we are where we are. We made a wholehearted, and we have been trying for years to get interest in that community without a great deal of success. I'm sure some of that is probably from our own awkwardness and stumbling, but at the same time, it hasn't been through a lack of sincerity or a lack of intention. So that's, that's something that's unfortunate, but we're, again, I think we're lucky to have Anne on board. And actually, that connection was made through Tierney Martin, who works at OPCD. They are friends and know each other from college, so that was kind of a nice serendipitous thing. And then your comment about, you know, bringing solutions and/or an agenda and bringing it to the neighborhood. We're trying not to do that, and we're trying not to do that in several ways. One is kind of backing away from the lid title. So we're not presenting a solution. We're presenting more of a goal. How do you reconnect people and reconnect communities? So not saying this is our solution. How does it work for you? It's more working under the assumption, and I think it's a pretty safe one, that certainly the CID, more than any neighborhood, but all the neighborhoods separated by I-5, lack a social lack a social, cultural, economic connectivity that they formerly have, formerly had and would otherwise have had the interstate not been there. So back to the visionary part, it's not, it will start with what are the things that will promote connection and promote community and promote those kinds of interpersonal economic relations that are important to you without necessarily saying this is what the solution is. So what's the order of importance? What are the, you know? And this is something that we, we need to develop, obviously, and we'll be doing it over the next coming months. You know, how do you prioritize those? How do you, you know, rank them, I guess? But absent of a solution, so it's something that's more aspirational. So it doesn't necessarily get mired in limitations, but it also doesn't impose any kind of solution, at least at the beginning. So it's, it's much more conversational and much more, it's meant to be much more of votive emotive than a typical planning exercise or delivering a particular product. And that's the, the mindset we're trying to go in with that. And again, a key to that is the, the formation of this advisory committee and having them be the client for the work. So, you know, it's strongly assumed that we'll have at least one representative from the CID, if not several, and they will be the ones guiding the work of the consultants. They will be the client. It's not gonna be us or OPCD, you know, working magic levers behind the scenes and saying, oh, we've come up with this great policy solution. Do you like it? It's more like, what do you, you know, from the grassroots up, I guess is the best way to describe it. So that's, that's the posture we're taking. Hopefully that will be successful. But certainly your comments are, are recognized. And it's been our lived experience trying to engage with that neighborhood. But once we hire professional outreach consultants with experience with that neighborhood, we certainly hope to be a lot more agile and successful in that conversation.
Yeah, so you come up, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, I mean, I, I've thought about this for a long time, even when we were trying to secure the funding for the feasibility study. And I, I just, I, I want to reinforce what Jamie said because it matters so much that if we're gonna make these type of investments in the city, they have to benefit folks who aren't just, you know, if you, like, if you look at the pattern of where we built lids, it's where there's more affluence. It's where there's more organized folks. If you look at kind of the, the genesis of the idea of lid I-5, it grew out of a lot of folks who were living in Capitol Hill at the time, right? And so it came from their experience of crossing over I-5 and sort of looking at their neighborhood and saying, boy, wouldn't this be great? And the most durable and beneficial infrastructure improvements we can make and the best use of our dollars that we can make are projects that, that come from community and have that long-term support and that long-term vision. And I, I, I'm always stuck in this tension point of we can't do these litting exercises if they're not also gonna benefit folks who've, who haven't had that level of investment in the past. But we also can't come in and say, we want to do this. This would be such a great idea. Here's a new infrastructure project. And so just exercise a lot of, like, let the community lead. If the community's not asking for this, lean into that and be aware of that. And, you know, maybe not, maybe having more than one person on your advisory board from that community. Like, I, I might argue that you need like much deeper engagement in the CID in order to really build their trust and their support. So just, just wanted to reinforce what I heard from Jamie. Also wanted to call out the fact that we have Deanna on the call, who I think worked at WS, you know, worked, maybe worked on some of the feasibility analysis and might have some interesting insights, some of which may, she may disagree with me on. But I, I really do view these infrastructure ideas as so critical for meeting multiple needs. And so I, I, you know, like, I don't know, we have Freeway Park there. I know there's a little lack of, I know Freeway First Hill has a really, really, really low amount of parks to people within that community. And, but at the same time, I, I work in housing and would love to see any of these investments really have that dual benefit of, you know, increasing housing capacity and housing choice while connecting communities, if that's possible. But Deanna knows the numbers better than I do. So before I call on Deanna, I think I might just, just check back in with Jamie to see if there's anything she wants to say in response to what I just said.
Well, I'd love to hear from Deanna too. I would. Agree with what Michaela was saying. And I would just really, really encourage, like, people know when folks are coming in with an agenda, even if it's not like, here's the solutions. And it's also a neighborhood that's been hit so hard by so many things and are still recovering from the impacts of, of COVID and Asian hate and all the things that have been happening in that neighborhood and then increased public safety concerns. And it's like thinking about, often it's like the personal connections that get things. So how you, how you were able to have that connection to Anne, right? And that takes time, like, that takes time to build those relationships. And, and whoever you end up selecting as a community engagement consultant, I would just really make sure that they're folks that actually have existing connection. Because having worked for a nonprofit in the CID, where we had, we've had some bad experiences of consultants that were brought in who had no connection to the neighborhood, but because they had someone that spoke Chinese, like, they were selected. And then it went disastrously and then it backfired. And folks were like, why do we even engage in these things? Because like, no one's listening. It, it might feel frustrating because you're like, we're trying, we're reaching out. But like, know that it's like, it's often because of everything that's come before. And, and don't stop trying, like, don't stop like making the good faith effort. Because I think, I think I see that you all are trying to bring something of value to the neighborhood and, and just continuing to be mindful of those power dynamics, those, those histories and approaching it from a place of humility. And I am curious what Deanna has to say.
I've been called on, I guess. Hi, Scott and team. This is, it's great to see you. It's great to see the energy and everything that's been built on this effort for like now six years since I was heavily involved. So I'm just inspired and in awe of the energy and momentum you all keep on this, on this vision. And I celebrate it. So thanks, thanks for your passion and your commitment for improving Seattle. I, I think what I'll offer right now is I celebrate the, let's just say, transformation of, you know, kind of rebranding idea and more the, 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 the intent and, and commitment to reconnect communities, whether it's above ground, under the structure, et cetera. That's, that's a fantastic focus. I think that the biggest challenge and opportunity is understanding that these mega projects, right, tend to come to life when, when really something catalyzes them, right? And I'm, and this is not only, of course, the momentum and the, and the stakeholder community supporting this idea, but what would truly catalyze investment in, in, on I-5 is going to stem from probably two things. One is the I-5 master plan, because in the end, we gotta remember that the asset owner is washed out. And in the end, nothing's gonna happen with, without the asset owner truly being committed or invested in making this vision come to life. So I think that the efforts that you've been putting forward to staying, you know, kind of grounded and, and, and in touch with Washett's efforts and the excitement that you're trying to build so that the city owns a vision for the portion of I-5 that is within City of Seattle jurisdiction is very important. The reality is that this could actually be triggered very quickly. I mean, all of this seems like it's like so far away, but it could actually happen immediately the moment there's an earthquake. And, and that is why this exercise is so important. It is, it should be framed, I think, more strongly around resilience. This, this is a, a resilience springboard. How do we come back from a catastrophe? And I speak from personal experience, having lived through two major earthquakes in Mexico City. And so I understand what it looks like and feels like to go through, you know, during, after, and rebuilding a city after an earthquake. And it's massive trauma. It is a lot of prioritizing very quickly. It is targeting the urgent rather than the strategy, right? And so to me, I would hope that the consultant that works on this next phase and that the city also, you know, within what is requested out of that consultant, puts a very, very, very strong focus on building back, right? And it is kind of like, the blood of this is we're building back from like the historic harms of the, of, of the freeway, but also of like the double harm that would be compounded on it in, into the future, right? And how are we gonna make I-5 future ready, right? And, and, and be rebuilt to, you know, address transportation needs, connectivity needs and community needs. So I guess what I will, I would say right now is, yes, to answer a little bit what both Jamie and Michaela were saying about the multi-benefit investments, absolutely. These should be multi-benefit investments. But there's also, I think, something that the feasibility study or potentially this future study is not necessarily looking at, that the city of Seattle should. And, and in my position as, you know, a commissioner of the Seattle Planning Commission, steward of the comprehensive plan, the vision is about understanding, you know, where the city's going in 20 years, right? Where does this project fit within the vision of where the city is going? And the reality is that we have to figure out that, you know, yes, housing is a priority. Yes, lack of open spaces is a priority. But when we look at a benefit cost analysis of the potential funding the city has at hand to address the myriad of policy issues we have, what would be the best use, you know, and, and cost of opportunity at like for the lid vis a vis all issues that are encompassing the city at this time? And, and therefore that's why I'm saying focusing it on a, a plan to come back from a moment of, you know, of resilience, right? How, how to build resilience would be a very, very good approach to kind of embed this as what is, what is the plan to build a lid particularly after an earthquake? Or particularly after a tsunami? And framing it that way could be just, maybe it doesn't have to be all of it, but it could be a very powerful way to really create a strategy that can be implemented for the time when this is gonna have more of a chance to come to life. Because prior to that, it seems like we're gonna be competing with so many other investment priorities in the city, right? That it may be a challenge unless we're focusing on a very small portion of litting I-5. Because it's incredibly expensive, as we know, as we, as the feasibility study showed it. And now it's, those were numbers of $20.19 pre-pandemic, guys. So that feasibility study doesn't, you know, we, we would need to take those numbers and compound, you know, all these years that have passed and, and, you know, post-COVID inflation, et cetera. And so if we were to just look at those numbers then and, and look at them now, just for the benefit of the commission, you know, the cost per, to acquire lid land to build affordable housing is, it was then in $20.19, $2,600 a square foot. So, you know, I don't see the Department of Housing in Seattle, you know, making a choice to buy such expensive land, so to speak, to build affordable housing when the cost to build, you know, a unit is about, you know, $1,100 a square foot, right? And, and, and in average typical, you know, affordable housing kind of like costs. So I guess as, even though there's a lot of merit to explore multiple scenarios, I think there's also merit in making sure that those exercises yield truly feasible, implementable visions, understanding some of these challenges that we have even today and what we know what it would cost to build on a lid. And I'll stop there. I don't know. I just rambled, you guys. But look forward to having coffee sometime, too.
Good thoughts. Thank you.
I'm giving folks a moment to put their name in the chat. Any final, anybody want the final word?
If I could be allowed, if no one does, I can follow up on what was said.
You're more than welcome to follow up, any, no matter what. Go ahead, John. Yeah, yeah.
So to pick up on a couple of Deanna's comments and others were made, certainly the, the I-5 master plan is the catalyst for this project. It's the predictable catalyst, obviously. If we have a scare the shit out of everyone video, like was done for the Viaduct about 15 years ago, that then Parsons Brinkerhoff did with the Viaduct collapsing and gas mains exploding and fire ravaging downtown, everyone might remember that, that said, wow, the Viaduct, this is a big deal. Absent that and an earthquake, the master plan is something we definitely know what's gonna happen. And as I relayed earlier, the, the secretary emphasized the importance of that. But she also pointed out, she, we videotaped these, these previous beer and cultures are both a 15-minute highlight video and a whole hour and a half session available online at our website. But one of my favorite moments so far, and it's, she's wonderful, and I'm certainly not making slight or fun of her, but it was funny to catch herself during one of these, during, during this panel, the last one, when she said, speaking about the condition of Interstate 5 in Seattle, she said, you know, everyone thinks it's just the overpasses, but it's the retaining walls. It's so much that sub stand. Let me just say, we wouldn't design things that way today. So she backed off from saying, yeah, this is a real mess, understandably so, because she didn't want to create a panic. But I mean, she's certainly, and her department's certainly aware that a lot of major investments need to be made to get the Interstate 5, certainly through Seattle, up to the level of resilience that, that Deanna indicated. So that, that's another opportunity with a master plan. They already know ahead of time and doing it that those are some of the risks that need to be addressed. And furthermore, the costs that Deanna quoted, which are absolutely correct and, and somewhat crazy, that was for a standalone lid over the present topography and geography of the situation. If Interstate 5 were designed to be more accepting and more integrated with the lids, especially with coordinating with things like on and off ramps, certainly we might have a different financial picture. And then to, to kind of broaden it out to a philosophical discussion that was, that was brought up earlier about coming with agendas. And I wanted to share a, a couple of things. And I think is, is all planning or And I think is, is all planning or design professionals, we fall into these traps. I certainly know I do as an architect. I like the shiny object, the pretty picture, you know, like, ooh, look at the money shot. And some of that's indicated by this rebranding effort we're going to have. You know, Scott and I are involved in planning and design and urban design, getting away from the object because we already presume that the best way to connect people is to have a lid because that's what everyone's doing. So we're going to back away from that and say, well, that's probably the best way, but we're not going to necessarily lead with that. But also something that came up last week, we were, we were speaking with Ternan. And that gets back to community engagement and not saying, this is what we're going to give you. What do you think? How do we make it best? But when we were speaking with Ternan last week, he was relating some presentations he made to some of his colleagues, some other planning colleagues, I think he was talking about, about updating it. And one of them, you know, understandably, to a certain extent, read off a list of, of parties, like, why haven't you parted? And we haven't done much yet, but they were still concerned. They didn't hear things about environmental justice and sustainability and resilience. And, you know, they, they expressed disappointment that those weren't the top of the agenda. While part of me agrees with that and says, yeah, those are all important things. That's the kind of thing that us as professionals through our own value system and interests by necessity move to the top of the list without asking whether the community thinks they're that important. So if we go there and say, you know, you've got to make this important, you've got to make that important. You know, how do we achieve that goal? Well, they may not have, they may not value those things as important. They probably will, given we're a pretty, you know, politically somewhat progressive city. But the priorities might be different. So I think as planners, professionals, architects, we have to be wary about questions like Ternan's colleague asked, or Scott and I and the others always saying, oh, it's a lid everywhere. We'll just lid all of I-5. It'll solve all of our problems. So abandon those kinds of preconceived notions as a means to have a more honest and open conversation where we really listen to people and what their priorities are. We don't inflict ours onto them seeking approval for what we think is best and giving them limited options. And I think, to end on that, I think one of the most important skills we're going to look for in the consultants is somebody with charisma, obviously, who can elicit, you know, responses and, and get to people's visceral reactions. But more important than that, someone who's a really good listener, you know, people who are really good at listening and taking what they hear and being a translator for them from their aspirational goal, aspirational gills, goals to what those might mean in a more physical form. So I think, you know, that's, that's something, you know, we talk about and think about is those kinds of things, which are, you know, one of the challenges we have to do approaching a project like this.
All right, John, thank you. I think Jamie has a, a question for you and follow up.
Oh, Rose can go first because I've already asked questions.
Right. And so just disclosure and disclaimer, I am a consultant of the biologist variety, but you know, I do work for a firm. And so I'm going to ask this very carefully. And I don't want like specific specifics. This is like, think about these things, right? So I, I heard you when you said, we're going to be careful, we're going to bring on a consultant who's a good listener. But I want to emphasize the importance of the contract terms and making sure that there are hard requirements. They are required to, you know, spend a certain portion of the money on listening to community, on hiring community associations, right? Like, I hear all the time, oh, yeah, they're good listeners. They're going to like, you know, really emphasize, you know, doing a good engagement program. And then I in environmental permitting, at the end of the day, I'm like, where was it? So, so that's, that's, that's kind of what I want to bring up. Like, I hear you, like, people often have good intentions, but unless it's baked into the contract and the request for proposal, it's not necessarily, necessarily going to happen. So I guess that's just kind of like my two cents is like, do a really good job with your contract terms so that it actually does play out the way you would like it to. And then the other part that I kind of like, like, heard was a little bit of, while we think this might be the best, we're going to come in with an open mind, like, work on pulling that in because that still sounds like we think this is going to best, we're going to listen to you, but we still think this is the best. And I know it's not necessarily what you intended, but that's what you're putting out. So just, just kind of that sort of feedback.
Yeah, I think we've got at least a third of our grant money dedicated towards community building 30 to 40%, which is a huge amount of money out of the grant. It's, it's, if you look at it in terms of a big bucket with kind of soft borders, it's actually almost half of it. And then, you know, then it depends on how you define those things. So we take that very seriously. So it's, it's a, it's a good chunk of it. It's almost half, really, in, in some ways. I mean, I'd have to look at it in hand, but it's, it's, it's a good amount, but I appreciate that input.
Okay, Jamie, I'm going to give you the final word.
No, no.
I, I don't have my agenda in front of me, and I think maybe we're over time. Can, actually Vanessa, can you first tell us how much time we have left?
We've got about five more minutes.
Okay, wonderful. Okay.
I'm trying to remember all the pieces because I think Rose had a really good, a good point there. I, I just like really, really, I agree with Rose, setting aside like budget for community engagement. But I will say you that fundamentally, the power dynamic that gets set up by that can be really challenging. I, I worked on a project, I'm not going to name what, that was a public infrastructure project where there was a consultant and then there were subcontracts to community organizations in the CID. And there were all these things that were written in that were deliverables that the consultant had to produce to the client. And then what that meant was that when that, they were things that didn't work for community, where I was like, you know what, you said you wanted to do this like youth summit thing? That's not actually going to work well. That's not going to work for our youth. I would recommend we do this. There was no wiggle room to negotiate that. There was also, there were also situations where they were like, sorry, you have to do this because that's what's written into our contract. And so we have to deliver on this. And if you don't do it, then we're not going to pay you. And so it set up some really challenging dynamics. And in one case, they were like, you didn't show up to this event. And I was like, and you didn't bring youth to it? And I'm like, you scheduled that during the school day. Like, how am I supposed to bring young people to this, right? And then, and then we didn't get paid for that. And I had already promised youth stipends to participate in things. And so like, I, what I'm saying is like, oftentimes, anytime there's a subcontracting situation, it's setting up a power dynamic that is not how you want to be working with community. And so I would, I would probably like, think about, is there a way to work directly with those community organizations instead of going through a consultant and then working with the community organizations? Because you want to be working as much as you can on a level playing field. Can there be money that is directly going to the organizations instead of hiring a consultant? Like, you're working and sending that money directly to a community-based organization who's then doing all the outreach and commute and all that on their own terms, right? And, and I, I also agree with Rose, like, it's just, yeah, I, I just like, you have to be so, so mindful of how, of how you come into communities, especially communities of color on these things. And so my question is, is if you're not getting a whole lot of engagement from community members in the CID, and let's say, let's say folks are, you know, you do get a response and it sounds like people are not really interested or they're like, not right now, or no, we don't want this, then is, would you, would you basically remove south of, of, or like the CID from the scope of work of your project if community didn't want it?
I mean, that's a good question. I think it'd certainly be considered, you know, if the community doesn't want, doesn't want it. I think in that situation, we point out the fact that Wash Dot's doing their master plan regardless of what the community wants them to do. Wash Dot's coming in and doing their work, and this is a way to get ahead of the inevitable. If they choose not to take the opportunity to get ahead of the asset owner, as Deanna often says, I think that's a missed opportunity for them because they're going to have to, then they would have to ignore Wash Dot. You know, I think we'll, we'll, we'll put on a friendlier face and be more approachable, but Wash Dot's going to do the work that we don't do. And that's a decision they have to make. If they want to opt out, then they're going to opt out. I think the only struggle in our part would just be reconciling that with the scope of work and the boundaries we submitted as part of our grant. You know, we'd have to kind of talk to the federal government and say, this community opted out. What do we do? You know, do we have to rewrite our scope? Do we have to redraw our boundaries? But if, if they are not interested, they're not interested, you know, we're not going to force it on them. But they will have to deal with it by 2029 when the master plan comes out. So, but yeah, that's a, that's a good question. But I, I think we'd have to have that conversation. It'd be unfortunate, but oh, and to your point, I think there is, I don't know, I'm not good with numbers, but there's definitely money for the kind of going directly into community for capacity building. I don't know how much it is, but it, it has at least five figures in it. It's 40, 50, $60,000, 70, something like that. There's, there's money targeted for that.
You are, you happened to, happened upon a group of folks who have done a lot of work in community, who have evaluated and thought a lot about how to do that work better and more effectively and more equitably. And so I hope you take our feedback with, with that in mind of where we, we genuinely care about the communities that are part of this scope of work. And offer them up with, with the kindness of, of, of hoping that your project can be embraced and, and improved and led by these communities. So we appreciate the briefing today. We already lost one of our commissioners who said that they are excited to keep following the LID I-5 effort and the intricate engagement strategy and keep, keep up the good work, John and Scott. So I, I think that's a good comment to leave this, this discussion on. Appreciate you coming today. Vanessa, do we have any new committee business?
No. Okay. No commission business. And yeah, nothing else.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, the April 10th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting is adjourned.
Thanks.
Thanks all.
Thank you. Bye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.